Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Here.
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 Item number three, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four, approval P and Z Commission meeting minutes from September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number five, Antler Ridge Plat One Final Plat. City engineer.
So for council's consideration tonight is a little bit of a unique scenario. Probably two years ago now, we made the change where you guys no longer review final plats if they're in substantial conformance with the approved preliminary plat. So for your consideration tonight is the Antler Ridge Plat One Final Plat. And there are two notable changes from the preliminary plat to this final plat. If you look at the second page of the final plat document that was included in the packet, both changes are actually in or near Lot Five as noted on this plat. Note Five, as noted on the final plat, was originally shown as two separate lots. The developer, as he's worked through the development, has come to, has somebody interested in purchasing both for the use of a single property. And to ensure that they don't get a Mid-American Transformer set right smack dab in the middle of the lot, he'd like to combine them. And then Outlot U is going to be constructed as a non-buildable outlot with a, with no access. For the, our understanding is for the purpose of selling it to the adjacent property owner to provide an additional buffer at the, that the property owner would like to have. And that, so those are the two significant, or the, the two changes necessitating the need for this commission to act upon the Antler Ridge Plat One Final Plat. I will warn the commission that the developer has talked about some other lots potentially being combined in the future. But he's not talked about splitting any further than what he's, what was previously shown. It would be similar situations like this where he's got somebody interested in two adjacent lots that would like to combine them and not have that transformer sit on the property line. We recommend approval of this to, in our minds, this doesn't significantly change the characteristics of this plat. And in a lot of ways, it potentially makes that lot more developable because the majority of that lot is occupied by a stormwater management facility easement agreement. So we would recommend approval of that. I will mention that the developer's engineer did reach out to me and is not able to make it, but I told him that would be fine because I, I felt that the commission would understand with her request. So be happy to answer any questions or feel any discussion.
Could you just touch on that East South Side Drive just a little bit? As far as where we're at on that, the city entered into an agreement on that. I'm just not totally tracking that, I think.
So there is a, so if you remember what was shown on the preliminary plat, the intent is that East Red Cedar Drive, and I'm gonna, I'm drawing a blank on what the East West Street is. Instead of paving two parallel roadways, the East, East West Street directly south, South Side Drive, the intent is to have that replace South Side. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. The intent would be to have it replace East South Side Drive with, upon development of Antler Ridge Plat Seven, which are the lots that back up to current South Side Drive, the developer or the city would consider vacation of East South Side Drive for the purposes of that. And then by doing so, we would retain all of the easements and the different, the various things for the existing utilities in the right of way. An update on that process is there's a development agreement basically illustrating when the developer has to start paying fees related to the future improvement per municipal code. And then just last week, we heard back from Polk County where we are now progressing on them transferring the north half of that roadway easement to the city so that we don't have to rely upon the city and the county vacating on similar timelines. Basically, the city would have control over the vacation of that easement all at once.
I do remember that now that you talked about it. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And would that, the county's half of that road, does that go in the future to the city or to the landowner to the north?
Well, so that's what we're working through right now is the transference would be to the city while East South Side Drive still exists. And then at the time that the developer's ready to put in that East West Street that will replace South Side Drive all the way through, the city would then have the option to vacate it based on the development agreement that, that the developer signed.
Any public comment? Any other commissioners? Any other comments or questions? If not?
I'll make a motion that we recommend a council approval of the Antler Ridge Plat One Final Plat Review subject to staff and engineers' comments and, and recommendations dated November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second. Yes.
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 Yes. Item number six, amendments to the comprehensive plan. Travis, you're up again.
This is a, we'll work on getting you screens here so that if there's any markups or anything that we want to specifically look at on any of these maps, we can talk through it. So for the, for the commission's consideration tonight is we're revisiting a comprehensive plan that we first, or a comprehensive plan amendment that we first looked at in August. One caveat is, is when you looked at it the first time, it was comprehensive plan amendment number thirteen. It's now number fourteen because of the comprehensive plan related to Alur at Saylorville. Just kind of a cleanup, you know, numerical thing. We weren't sure where it was gonna fall. So it was originally thirteen and now it's fourteen. So the reason for this change was necessitated by various changes to the future land use plan zoning map and other items within Polk City's comprehensive plan and catching up several of the, the various maps. Other maps included. Updating to include unapplicable maps, those updated parcel lines so that we have reflected what's been platted to date. And then some minor shape cleanups where essentially we just, the data's gotten a little better. We've done some amending to various other things. And we cleaned up those sheets so they cleaned up. Let's see. We will start with the future land use plan. I will warn you, I'm gonna skip the streets plan because that's the one that I anticipate having the most discussion on. But future land use plans, we kind of talked about this back in August, but I'll, I'll refresh everybody's memory, kind of start from scratch. We're updating future land uses plans at nine oh five, or future land uses at nine oh five, ten ninety and fourteen oh one West Bridge Road along with ten ten Tyler Street. Changing those from, or to commercial from mixed use. The old future land use plan had them as a mixed use. Approved site plans have superseded and been completed on those items that fit more into that commercial space. And we think that's more applicable to the corridor as a whole. Future land uses at sixteen hundred West Broadway and two hundred South Fourth were changed to civic to reflect city, Polk City ownership as well as the intended uses. The lot on Broadway to be a new, or a library expansion in the city hall we're in right now. Minor update to near Leonard Park to reflect the actual park layout. A portion of that park was previously noted as high-density residential. Just kind of a cleanup thing that doesn't have a lot of impact. Revision to the layout of the Collector Street between East North Side Drive and East South Side Drive to reflect the approval of the Monarch Crossing. Final plat and preliminary plat, so that is, well, I'm on the wrong map. So that is this, if you're looking at your screens there, that's this collector here. It comes through the Antler Ridge on the south, Monarch Crossing up here. It originally was slated to go further west, but just the way that those two, the Big Creek Ridge and Monarch Crossing plats developed, it made more sense for Monarch Crossing to have that one. Street layouts in Creekview to reflect the preliminary plat and the final plats that have already been approved. That was a minor cleanup thing. Big Creek Commons had a future land use, so this civic originally bled into where this hi, this low-density residential is now being shown. It encompassed three or four single-family lots and the civic land use didn't really make sense, so that's a cleanup one as well. We'll skip over seven for now because we'll talk about that with the streets. And then the addition of the proposed park in Four Seasons Polk City, so up here north of Hug Drive. That originally was further north in the, in the plat, and so that's reflected to show it was actually on the preliminary plat. And then you can actually disregard number nine. We were having some plotting issues when I put the memo together, but we got them cleaned up. So number nine has been taken care of and the maps in your packet reflect the change we made as part of thirteen down here in the southeast portion of town. Like I mentioned, we'll skip the major streets plan, sanitary sewer. So we did the northeast, the north and the southeast trunk sewer studies back in two thousand twenty-two. That map's just been updated to reflect that as well as what we're calling right now the Northwest Sanitary Sewer District. So that would be everything associated with the, the TCI lift station and those future upgrades. The Northwest Sewer Study is kind of a working title right now. There's potential that when we go to do those hookup fee districts, the name of it may change a little bit, but the shapes will be reflected accordingly. Parks and bikeways, so that would be your third, the third map in your packet, or fourth, actually. So this one's actually changed a little bit even since the last time we talked. Addition of a park in Antler Ridge, so that's down here in accordance with the preliminary plat. Updated the trail to reflect what was shown as part of Monarch Crossing. So originally, we had that trail mirroring the Collector Street as it went from North Side Drive to South Side Drive. It now comes out of Big Creek Commons, comes down across that existing bridge, if you guys know where that is on North Side Drive. And then it hugs the property line, wraps around the existing single-family home that's being protected out there and then runs on top of the future trunk sewer.
And so there is, there is indeed a line under the boundary of the city there. I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
In other spots that's off to the side.
Yeah, and that's one I missed. I'll, I'll mark that one. That we can get that cleaned up, yeah, because it was doing the same thing down here in Antler Ridge and it got lost. So yeah, we'll get that one cleaned up before it goes to council. But then, as we work further to the south, as this collector continues to work to the east, we end up back on that collector. And the reason we do that is Polk City code requires driveways off of lower classification streets. And so by putting that trail along that Collector Street, we minimize the number of crossings, driveways, that kind of things that that trail has to interact with. So that, that to us is the more desirable location. And again, the thing with the, the trail layout as we work through this as well, remember that a lot of this is general intent. So if, if something works better for the city or the developer as these things push forward, the intent is, you know, you need to pick up the trail here where it's already established and you need to put it in a place that makes sense to the south. And how exactly it meanders through your development is kind of up to how, how it works out. And then as part of that first change as well, we showed coming down forty-fourth, crossing at forty-fourth, and then working its way across to Alur at Saylorville, and then the portions outside the city pushing to the west and connecting to the Neil Smith Trail. Just providing another interconnectedness for the trail network. The other major change that we've had is as we work through the Neil Smith, the High Trestle Trail Connector. I guess something worth noting to the commission, recently, city council identified a name for that trail system, so it is now going to be the Polk City Junction Trail. Kind of related to the old railroad spur that used to connect Polk City to the high, what used to be on that High Trestle Trail line. So the, I'll refer to it that way now, but I wanted to let everybody know that. This layout over here really hasn't changed as it works through the regional park, as it comes south, as it comes to North Side Drive. Since this was last updated, we've been working with Mid-American and it's been determined to be financially infeasible to go down Third Street with that trail. So we're coming down second, or Downbluff, down second, and then we're connecting, the primary connection, at least for the near future, is going to be down Broadway. We're gonna connect to the Deer Haven Trail, that existing portion of the Deer Haven Trail. And then we've got easements or outlots through the crossroads at the Lake subdivision. And we'll connect to Third and Bridge basically right there by Home State Bank.
So on the map here, you're showing an on-street trail on Deer Haven and the existing trail in the back of the lots. Are they both gonna be there?
No, that, that's something that I'll, I'll get cleaned up too. I mean, unless you want me to keep it shown that way. I mean, that becomes very difficult with all those homes. Yeah, well, so we'll get rid of basically where these two diverge. We'll get rid of those.
And what you're showing in the core land, is that just a hope and a prayer or is that, is there a plan for that?
There's not an immediate plan for that. That would just be something that would be a little less urban, a little more greenway, that kind of thing. And that's just something, the last time this was updated, I think that was added or it was modified to reflect the way it shows today. And I don't think it's a terrible trail segment, and so that, it doesn't make any sense, at least to me, to remove it at this point. I mean, the city moving forward is gonna have to have the relationship, a relationship with the core because of what the land is that we're pushing into. And so I think, I think if, if that becomes something that we want to address, I think it's easier just to leave it on there as a, as a duplicate section. Like I mentioned, on the future land use plan, we added the Four Seasons Park. Update to White, the Whitetail Parkway Trail, which we will kind of dive a little deeper into on the streets map. The other update we had, so the, because of the recent zoning change up here on what was called Gateway Crossings at the time with the high-density residential, we put a park up here because those high-density residential homes or living facilities are gonna, we're gonna want those to be serviced by parkland. So we've moved that further north away from this Collector Street. Just kind of to even out some of the park service areas and those kinds of things. And so that, that's the update there. I guess that's one. I know the commission in the past has had a lot of.
Just for what it's worth, that one doesn't show on the future land use plan.
Okay, yep, we can.
But it does show on the parks plan.
Yep.
I'm assuming you want me to tell you this stuff as we're going?
Yes, yes, I do. Because I've had my head buried so far in it. Sometimes it's good to have somebody else look at it. Okay. Anything else on that one?
Just a quick comment. On the intersection of Third and North Side, where the existing trail comes from the south, and I realize that intersection's gonna be redesigned, but the new trail's coming in from the north. The existing trail from the south meets North Side Drive, several car lengths back from the stop sign line. Meaning we, I'm hoping we aren't intending on crossing the new trail to meet with the south trail exactly, but we're hoping this, on the trail on the south side will be moved over to the stop sign.
Yes, it will be. So what we currently have laid out, well, it's roundabout. So we're actually gonna push that crossing further to the east where it starts, it'll be more or less located in the exact same spot the, the crossing is on Vista Lake. But we, we, I think it's about forty feet a trail. That existing trail will be removed so that we can wrap around the corner that roundabout. Okay. Next map is the park service area. So this is, really reflects a lot of those, those changes we've made to the parks areas. Yep, so we've got that, that new park and Gateway Crossing shown with a service area. We got that Four Seasons Park shown. And then we've got the Antler Ridge down in the southeast part of town. This is one, this was a really, really old map, so it predated the purchase of that parkland, so we updated the service coverage map for that regional park to reflect that. And then just several minor revisions that actually reflect the parkland that Polk City has. So a lot of cleanup stuff on this one, just catching us up with all the other stuff that we've talked about. Anybody have anything on that one? Okay, then we'll go back to the streets. So like we talked about before, we revised that, oops, I'm on the wrong map again. Revised that Collector Street to reflect Monarch Crossing and Antler Ridge, and then we modified those, that, the alignment there to have some reasonable curves to accommodate those two endpoints. We amended the Creekview Estates plat to be the existing roadways and then the future collector of Creekview Avenue. And then the addition of blue stars to this map. So that, that's one thing that kind of got added with this iteration is as we continue to do planning, as we continue to do CIPs, as we continue to work forward on some of the documents that the city's preparing, we'll have a better idea of what these improvements are. But essentially what we're looking at here is these blue stars are intersection improvements to improve safety. So that, right now, those could be either roundabouts or signals. As those plans get a little more fleshed out, as we get further along, we can start to maybe differentiating the, differentiate those improvements. But right now, it's, we intend to improve this intersection. We understand that it's going to become problematic or is problematic, and we're going to address it. And then the big topic of discussion is Whitetail Parkway. So in two thousand twenty-three, Snyder and Associates looked at Whitetail Parkway as the city continues, continues to expand to the north. And then looking at, and the improved data for LiDAR. So one of the things that changed is to the west of Third Street, we shifted it slightly to the south as LiDAR improves, you know, and until we get out there to survey, it's just looking at that LiDAR topographic information and picking where that narrowest point is for that crossing to make it as economical as possible for the city. And then, once you get to South Side Drive and then looking to the east, originally, this had an S curve in it. What we found during, in that study is, and what we recommended and what the city council applied for funding on was a roundabout at North Third and Whitetail Parkway and a roundabout at North Third and Northwest one hundred and twenty-sixth Avenue. When we last talked, I kind of alluded to some of the reasoning that we had for that decision. The commission asked us to dig a little deeper and provide a little more information, so I've updated your, the memos in the packet to reflect that. Really, the big thing that we found is when we originally laid out Whitetail Parkway with those reverse F's curves coming out of the county into Polk City, I think we were doing it in a more future, like Whitetail Parkway was gonna be a lot further out. And so we were projecting of what it could look like while it was still in the county or on the fringes of Polk City, not knowing when things were gonna develop near it. As, as we continue to look at Gateway Crossing, as we continue to look at development in that area, and then as we continue to look at some of the traffic growth and some of the traffic behavior along Northwest one hundred and twenty-sixth, our recommendation is to get rid of those S curves east of North Third Street because that services, or serves as an entryway to the community. And Snyder and Associates, Polk County and Polk City have all, both anecdotally and by counts, observed what in our opinion is exceedingly high speeds along Northwest one hundred and twenty-sixth and Northwest forty-fourth, as well as Polk County just put rumble strips down at three intersections along Northwest forty-fourth. In discussions with the police chief as well as the fire chief, Northwest one hundred and twenty-sixth and North Third Street is one of the most traveled intersections for school traffic, one of the three. He observed that, at least the police chief observed that one hundred and twenty-sixth and North Side Drive seeing the most amount of school traffic of any intersection on the edges of Polk City. So our recommendation comes from installing traffic calming measures as you enter the community to help dissipate some of that speed, to help announce the presence of Polk City as well as in a lot of ways buy the city a little bit of time in improving Northwest one hundred and twenty-six as you move further to the east. Because I think ultimately, one of the things that we're gonna be looking at as Polk City looks to the north and east is you're, you've got a rural section with ditches and high amounts of visibility, which in a lot of ways is a really good thing, but at the same time promotes high speeds and sort of a blasé attitude behaviorally for drivers. And so I think by placing roundabouts at the entrance of your community, that buys the city a lot of time in improving Northwest one hundred and twenty-six. It helps promote slowing people down and helps promote the urbanization even before you curb and gutter those streets. So that, that's kind of the thinking, sorry, I let my computer go to sleep, of why we recommended those things. I'd be more than happy to continue to discuss that, answer any questions you may have, but those, those are the kind of the updates and the, the thoughts we have on Whitetail Parkway.
Thank you for your perspective. And yeah, I, I, I still have concerns with the new plan and a lot of it goes back to the initial vision that our prior paid consultant, which was, happened to be Snyder and Associates in this case as well, brought to us. It wasn't our idea, it was actually their idea for the northern bypass of the city that would really go from Big Creek Park to the interstate without any intersections. Or I shouldn't say intersections, without any ninety-degree corners. So only, only with curvature. With the intent of not only better serving the neighborhoods north of TCI and providing better access for them out of that area over to the interstate, but also trying to improve upon the elephant in the room, which is a block away here at Third and Broadway. Trying to provide ways for people and electronic mapping systems to see what options are faster than going through Third and Broadway and provide an easy way for folks to make it through our community. And particularly folks coming down forty-fourth and attempting to get to the mile-long bridge is really who would be most likely to use this, this option as an alternative route coming through as an alternative route coming through, uh, uh, Third and Broadway. And, you know, the, with, with the pedestrian concerns we have in our downtown here, certainly we need slow speeds here in order to accommodate that safety. And normally when you have slow speeds, one of the ways to get more traffic through is to add lanes. And I don't see adding, uh, you know, four lanes and a left turn lane up Third Street as really being a viable option either. I think we need to look at viable ways to promote traffic to not come through here if their intent is to not do any commerce in Polk City and strictly trying to use Polk City as a corridor to get to the mile-long bridge. I, at the time that Snyder and Associates came up with that plan, we didn't have a path for Whitetail yet, how it was going to cross Fox Creek. Hundred and twenty-six going straight west from Third, there's quite the bluff there. It was soon pointed out to us after some of the initial things were, were looked at. And so ended up coming to the low point on Third there as the easiest way to get out of the Fox Creek Valley. And I think kind of by default, uh, the plan that was laid out at that point in time just followed the water course up to 126th as that water course kind of turned south. And that's where the location of the S curves kind of, how they got to be where they showed on our comprehensive plan. It was not any advanced study. It was really just where did the water course go and what, what would be the cheapest way to build a gradual, you know, incline on the road. Uh, I don't think we fully have vetted other options to make Whitetail a straight-through road to the interstate to help some of our other problems that we're going to have in our city with traffic in the downtown area. And, uh, moving those S curves further east, uh, you know, go, keeping Whitetail going straight east from its intersection with Third further, making those S, making those curves be less severe, uh, so more gradual, having that, making it be more of a gradual moving south towards 126th. Could even go, you know, north of that farmstead where the bike trail is going to be and, and have, you know, some of that curvature occur, you know, uh, east of that. Uh, also having traffic move, you know, having that go further east solve some of the problems of the ditches and stuff on 126th and trying to make that into a modern roadway as well. Just like we're talking about, uh, on our first item on the agenda tonight, you know, just move the road off of the, uh, uh, the existing street that has the, the ditches and the bad contours and, and build new at a, at a, at a different location. So I, I, I'm still not sold that we can't make this work. And, uh, and I, I believe as far as, uh, traffic coming into our city and how to slow it down, uh, you know, certainly slowing it down further east, I think needs to be accomplished anyway, whether that be over on 44th with a roundabout at that intersection to slow it down. If you, as you come east on, or go west on 126 from 44th, those hills are pretty severe right now. You, I mean, if you go over those hills at over forty miles an hour, you're almost airborne. So traffic is slowing down. It's just a matter of how can we keep it slowed down once you come, uh, come across those hills? And, you know, that's, like I say, one option might be as soon as you come off of the, the, the hills, you know, start, start a more gradual curve that even that far east and go north of the farmstead or start a more gradual curve just after the farmstead, right after you meet the, the bike trail and, and, and head northwest. I think there's options available that, that really haven't been vetted. And I feel like we're giving up an opportunity to really improve our transportation structure for the long haul. And, uh, you know, this, as you say, I mean, this, you know, this isn't an edge-of-town problem for very long. You know, this growth can be occurring very quickly. This is going to be an in-town problem. And so, you know, we, we don't want people that are trying to figure their wayfinding around to need to make two corners at ninety, well, whether they be in a roundabout but two ninety-degree corners to try to get, get to where they're going when that could easily be, be improved and be a much better bypass option.
I, I will, I, and I understand what you're saying, but I will say the DOT has made it a point to get rid of as many S curves as they can. They want square intersections because S curves, skewed intersections, intersections near and on curves are very dangerous. And so that, that really is the premise of what we're proposing is we think it's a safer option that operationally will serve the city better. To square all that up, get rid of the, as many S curves as we can. The reason we're leaving the S curves west is because a lot of that land is undevelopable, so you're not going to have intersections along that. And I think ultimately, I think that's, that's where, what our perspective is, is those S curves create intersections with less-than-desirable sightlines or even if they are standard, they're still a little bit hairy and particularly as you start dealing with elevation as you push further to the north. That, that's our perspective, is that we have, we have safety concerns, particularly for an urbanized roadway, having pest curves on it that may be intersecting with other lower-classification roadways.
Yeah, I think I'm still more on board with the one roundabout intersection there. I think it's what we've been shooting for, for quite a while. And I think there's other methods to achieve the traffic calming out there. I can think of several communities that have basically teed-off intersections that regret it for a long time. And I think it's our chance to do it and do it correctly. And there may be some other additives we need along the way. But I would hate to see constructed what we have here.
Could I maybe just throw something out there for the commission to think about? So two years ago, Polk City did a Whitetail Parkway corridor study, correct? So we did this full study. Snyder took several months to do the study, came in and gave a presentation to the council on several different options they had and a proposal. I recognize that this would take more time, but perhaps what we could do is, feeling that you may have mixed feelings about changing the street plan tonight, we hold off on that map adjustment until the commission could maybe get a presentation on Whitetail Parkway, like a full study. I rec, I realize that Travis just gave us a great ten-minute overview, but there was a lot of time and effort put into that study and it might just be, um, a little bit, uh, it, it may just be worth your while to kind of review the entire study that was completed and have full presentation.
Yeah, can you send that out to us or?
Absolutely. Yes, I could do that and I could make an arrangement. I can work with Travis to see when we could give, you know, a presentation to the commission, maybe at one of our upcoming meetings. But, um, I think that'd be good information to you, for you to review as well.
I guess the other option that you could do too is you could make, because the way that I have my memo set up is you could make a recommendation to approve the other updates to the street plan and just have us exclude number, well, three and four, I guess, of the major streets plan notes. We could, we'd, it'd be pretty easy to revert that stuff, keep it saved somewhere so that if we either go back to this layout or we do some sort of hybrid or something like that, that would make update, making that update quick. So if the commission doesn't have any other objections to what we've got shown, we could get those maps cleaned up. The only reason I suggest that is it makes it easier as we're sitting through pre-application meetings, working through preliminary plats and that kind of thing, if we have current approved maps that we can work off of. Understanding that if we, you know, if you guys want to continue to mull over, want to think about it, want to have more information, we certainly can do that, so.
And, and yeah, just get, going back to your, uh, to your option as well, I think that would be great. I, I think all we received was a, was a map. Uh, at the, at the tail end. And, uh, and without any history as to what went into it. You know, you could tell by looking at the map, it was, you know, a lot of it was based on grade, you know, at least from, from grade and, and water course from, from what I could see. But I just heard a lot of talk tonight about S curves. And as opposed to, uh, I, I guess I am very open to looking at alternatives to moving the S curves further away from Third or making the less cur, S curves with less of a curvature to them. So having more of a, a longer diagonal section so that there's less of a curve, I guess. What can we do to make that safer? I am, I'm very open to ideas there. And, and I, and I, I think what you're going to show us with the study probably was an economic-based study that followed the water course. Because that's what, at least that's what it does.
Sure. You know, in hindsight, we probably should have just had planning and zoning as part of that presentation. But, um, we'd be happy to share that study and, um, come back to revisit that public. I don't want to deter planning and zoning from feeling like they can't vote tonight, but I feel like you might be missing some pertinent information.
Well, we would be looking for a recommendation on at least the other four maps so that we can get those in front of city council.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make a motion that we recommend to council amendments to the comprehensive plan for, uh, as described in staff and engineers' comments dated November eighteen, two thousand twenty-four, for the future land use plan, with the exception of number seven on the future land use plan. At least the, the road changes related to that number seven. The major streets plan, with the exception of items three and four on the major streets plan, the sanitary sewer system plan map, the parks, trails, and bikeways map, with the exception of number five on the parks, trails, and bikes ways map and the park service area map.
Second. Yes.
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 Yes. On a sidebar, are you, so is there any conversations about this is our city limits, is that correct? Or corporate limits?
The red line.
The red line?
Sorry, I was having.
Sorry, it's, yeah.
Yeah, the he, the heavy red line would be corporate.
Is there conversations about extending that at any point in time or no, keeping it how it is?
Annexation for Polk City is very development-driven. So it's more when a developer approaches us about a project that they have. We have traditionally not been involved in involuntary, uh, development, but no plans as of right now. We have been approached by a few developers on the Young property.
So that would be this one?
Yep, Travis is showing right now. There are a lot of unique circumstances associated with that property, so nothing solid right now, but a lot of inquiries.
The, the rectangle that we have and then there's the rectangle, the other.
Dumb ones?
Yeah, this one. This.
Yes.
What's the story there?
So that was, that's the gateway crossings that we were, um, mentioning before. It was annexed and actually rezoned, um, what, probably two years ago now. It was rezoned to be a mixture of commercial, um, both industrial, restricted and non-restricted, and then high-density residential. And the reason that it kind of looks like it's got this little nub out here is you can't leave, or you have to have at least a hundred feet of continuity within your corporate limits, I think it's a hundred. You have to have some distance. And so we, as part of this, the developer talked to, um, the Bergen Farms LLC to annex this portion of land in, um, to give them continuity with the rest of Polk City.
Got it. And then what's this land here, that big square underneath it?
Uh, that, that's also owned by Bergen Farms LLC. And the reason that that's not shown in the service areas is we have the ability to serve it. So the, the, I guess that's a clarification of this map. Is that your future growth, um, in the different growth areas that you have?
Okay, um, item number seven, reports and particulars, council.
The only thing that I was going to say is we do have a vacancy on planning and zoning. And we've received two applications from people who are serving. And Mayor Karsten, uh, myself and Amber Pregnance are currently interviewing those two applicants. And I think Mayor Karsten plans to make a, um, a formal recommendation at the next council meeting.
I was unfortunately absent at our last city council meeting, so I don't have a lot of updates for you. But they do know, you know, obviously they say no, they were on with the original park and the bond vote for that. It did not pass, but I understand, um, Mayor Karsten would like to proceed by engaging a group of citizens with a variety of thoughts, opinions. He's working on putting that together to figure out a path forward. I know it, it was over fifty percent vote, which tells me over half of the citizens were behind it, but, um, didn't pass with enough. So kind of going to Plan B and figuring out what, um, what the future looks like for a potential park. Lots to figure out now, but, um, not dead at least for now, which is, again, I know there's been a lot of need for a lot of those components, so we'll, uh, we'll see what the future holds.
Is there two bond options? I guess I was under the impression that one, you needed over sixty percent and then the other bond is just you needed the majority, is that, does?
No, for general, or, or general corporate purpose, yeah, you need a sixty percent approval.
Okay.
Uh, I've had several people ask about the water tower too. Is that, is that contracted? Is it in process or?
That will, that's still moving forward. Yep, that's out there in that parcel.
That is moving, okay.
But that was separate from the bond.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, just curious. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anything? Commissioners? All right, then I will adjourn the, the meeting. Thank you, everyone.